All right. I'd just like to start by complimenting our street crews for getting out and clearing the snow, our recent snow, and I'm sure they're out there right now or will be tonight. And just say they're doing a good job and it's appreciated. Also have a proclamation I'd like to read today for our public library. Whereas in 1897, two years before the first Carnegie Library Grant in Minnesota, William Harris Laird, founder of the Laird Norton Lumber Company, offered to finance the construction of a library if the city would agree to secure the site and maintain the library as a public institution. And whereas on January 21st, 1899, at 5:00 PM, William Harris Laird quietly dedicated the Winona Free Public Library to its Board of Directors and the city in a public ceremony without fanfare. And whereas Winona Public Library proudly celebrates 120 years of continued service as the oldest public library in the state of Minnesota, still operating in its original historic space. And whereas the library is a crucial part of the community, not only in the sense that it is a free public space shared by all, but also in the sense that it is a hub of positive influence which we have collectively created and which shapes each of us. And whereas library staff remain committed to providing a communal space and equitable access to materials and resources which interest, impact, inform, and enlighten all members of our community. And now therefore I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim January 20 to 27 as Winona Public Library Week in the city of Winona. And I'd like to present this to our library director, Leslie Goff.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Oh, yeah. It's fun.
I love Mary.
And that's all I have. And I'll ask the city manager.
I just had one thing, just to let the council know that Jessica Wojon down in Finance has passed all requirements and she has become a certified public finance officer.
Oh, great.
So a big step for the city and really good for her as well. So, thank you.
All right. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
And under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, sign and banner requests. Make a motion to approve those requests. Seconded that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1, request vacation of the northern portion of Chestnut Street. There's an ordinance for your review. I make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance. I'd second that.
Again, motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Questions? Paul?
Yeah, I'm just curious if in the future this vacated property, the street, will have any impact on potential likeways or pathways that we may, might be developing or because this is about close to where we may have to come out off the levee in order to get around the marina. So I'm wondering if that would be impacted.
I had a conversation with the city engineer and public works supervisor and they both said no, it would not be an issue. They're satisfied with access, they're satisfied with the easements going forward and the easement or the access for volunteer services.
Other questions? Personally, I'm glad to see that these neighbors were able to come together and find a way to work it all out, which is something we don't see enough of. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the KNS2 easement.
I'd make a motion to accept the easement and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. And do you want a separate motion for, to accept the easement or, okay. Just under twice.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.2 is the Downtown Strategic Implementation Plan. I make a motion to authorize staff to enter into the professional service agreement.
Second.
Again, motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion?
This item was in the budget and we just wanted to bring it forward in case there was any questions.
Does anyone from staff want to comment on what we're doing here?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, this was in the 2019 budget. And with all of the projects that we see happening downtown, we think it's important to plan the infrastructure as well, which is why it was placed in the 2019 budget. And last week, the Port Authority approved funding a portion of this, $10,000 of the $30,000, and the rest is in the planning budget. And again, we just wanted you to be aware of it and bring it back for your review.
When would this be completed?
This year, end of the year.
Okay. Michelle?
No, I can't.
Paul?
Well, and maybe this has already been completed with the complete street study, but will there be incorporation, multimodal transportation, how that impacts and interacts with the downtown development plan? And will that include bicycle transportation or infrastructure?
So the proposal that was submitted does take into account the complete streets and pedestrian policy and also our most recent comprehensive parks plan. So all of that review is the first task that's being completed as part of the study.
It also mentions the bicycle plan, too. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Michelle?
I just want to say thank you. I'm appreciative to the Port Authority and to the staff for making sure that we're getting on top of development downtown so we don't get caught up in allowing things to happen without having some idea of what might be best. So thank you for being on top of that.
Anything else? Guess we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is the Westfield Golf Club Lease Agreement Amendment.
Chad.
Mayor, council, we presented tonight the Westfield Club Second Amendment to their lease agreement. As you are aware, Westfield did meet with the council back in August to discuss and officially ask for review and possible amendment for the agreement that we have for operations at Westfield. Primarily, the discussion was focused around maintenance at the facility and then, again, how the city would fund that would be our responsibility. So we spent some time over the last six months negotiating with Westfield and have presented this option to you tonight. And what we have negotiated is that in lieu of direct city services for maintenance at Westfield, we would provide a cash amount of $8,000 to Westfield that would help offset some of their maintenance costs. We would however send staff, if time allowed, to assess any of the maintenance questions that may arise at the facility. For example, if there was, you know, a leaky faucet, that Westfield could contact the city either through our building maintenance or park maintenance, we would go out and assess before, for example, a plumber would come out and be charged for that amount. If our staff could fix it and time allowed, we would do that. And that's how the language is written in the agreement. If the time's not allowed or if it's past our skill set, then in a sense, this $8,000 then could be used for that maintenance charge, a contractor needed to come out. That $8,000 of requesting is not within the 2019 budget, so we're asking that come from the facility fund. And then going forward, if you approve tonight and subsequent years, we would add that to our annual budget, likely within the park maintenance budget. The approval of the amendment also needs review and approval by the Winona Athletic Board. They met today at 4:00 and unanimously approved the amendment for this to go forward tonight. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Paul?
So the $8,000 is basically is for the club, the athletic board, to decide on the maintenance decisions in lieu of city staff doing the maintenance? Is that how I'm reading this?
Mayor and council, the $8,000 would go directly to Westfield. So it wouldn't go through the athletic board. We would, we would literally cut them a check for $8,000 directly to Westfield. They would, as they are now, continue to do the maintenance and operations of that facility. The negotiations though, that $8,000 is, is to be used for maintenance of the facility. So we've asked it not go toward, you know, staffing costs or things like that. It needs to go to maintenance of the facility.
So we, we wouldn't actually, our staff then wouldn't be doing, they may be doing the maintenance, but may not be doing the maintenance. I guess my main concern here is, is about the, maybe the neglect of some of, some city assets that city staff may, if they were doing the maintenance, may deem more valuable than, than the golf course making the decision. So that's, I'm concerned about that kind of depreciation or...
Mayor and council, in essence, we've, we've allowed that to happen all of these years. Because we've allowed Westfield to maintain, if that's preventive maintenance or regular routine maintenance, we've, in a sense, to use a word, surrendered that through the agreement. And we've trusted that they're taking care of our assets. I think now with them asking for additional help, we came to this conclusion that, well, if time allows, we'll send some staff out to assess and if we can do the maintenance, we'll do it. If not, you're gonna need to contract it out and we'll also assist with that. That's what the cash is for.
Al?
I noticed in the new number, paragraph 18 on the lease that we're dealing with, it says up to $8,000 annually. So what you're saying when you say that it'll be cutting a check for $8,000, that's for this year, but in years ahead of us, you will be adjusting that accordingly, so up to $8,000?
So we, we did, Mayor and council, that's a good, good catch. We did write it that way based on that thought process. Meaning if, we would cut a check to Westfield for $8,000, that's what the agreement says. But if we notice over years that it's, it's less, then that would give us the ability to trigger a renegotiation with Westfield. If it's more, it allows Westfield to trigger some discussion with us about, that certainly is not enough. I can tell you, based on the financials of Westfield, I don't think they're going to have a problem spending that $8,000.
Well, I agree. Maybe golf will, you know, revitalize to the way it was 10 or 15 years ago. But, and I just wanted to comment that also in that same paragraph, I'm glad to see that a report should be made to the city manager by March 1st of each year detailing how the funds allocated by the city were spent in the prior year. And I think that would be important to know how those dollars were spent. And obviously, I'm sure the city council will get that report as well. I would think it would be, you know, it's a public document this time, so thank you.
It does, excuse me, but it does leave, we were gonna talk about having that in every one of our agreements, that they would actually come and do the report. So while the information might come to staff, they would also be...
Presented.
Presented to the, to the council as a whole. Is that, is that in here or you might have been drafting that at the time that we had this other side issue?
Mayor and council, because this is an amendment, that specific language is not in this amendment. We go back to the original agreement, it says they need to report back. We certainly, and I think Westfield would be amenable, we'd ask them to come back to council and give that report, especially with this amendment.
Right.
Certainly can do that.
Pam and then George.
Is the city doing any kind of an annual property review? So you say that, you know, the agreement has been standing as it has been, that the current management has been trusted with the property. But do we do any kind of a review of the property?
Mayor and council, we do not. We primarily rely on reports from Westfield, but we have not done a facility review of that facility.
Do you think we should?
I think this is the start to doing that. In that, you know, again, if they're having roof problems or irrigation problems, that it's time that we start taking a look at what the long-term maintenance needs of that facility are. And then in the greater context, back to your point, how are assets being treated? So yes, we, I think that that maybe is best independent, but we can certainly bring that back for discussion.
Fine, okay.
George?
Now in regards to the $8,000, is that maintenance on the building or is it golf course, too, or just the physical building?
Mayor and council, in our discussions, it primarily was the building. But we haven't limited to, we did not limit where Westfield could use that. So I think it's important also for the grounds to be maintained. And so if that was some type of grounds work, that seems reasonable to, at least from our negotiations, that seems reasonable that it's used either way. I think it was important, though, that it's not used, in a sense, for, you know, staffing needs or, you know, pro shop needs. It's, it's facility maintenance, grounds maintenance.
I just want to say, I see Scott Elingheisen's here and Derek Kuschnet. I think you guys are doing a hell of a job out there. And there's some challenging times right now, but you're doing a good job with everyone else to hold it together. And I think it's gonna be successful. Well, it's still, it's successful already, but it's gonna be able to get back going again strong, so. And it is Derek, right?
Kurt.
Kurt.
Close.
Close, yeah.
Mr. Kuschnet.
Mr. Kuschnet, there we got him. But thanks, guys, you do a good job.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I think we're ready to vote.
We don't have a motion.
Oh, we don't? I thought we had a motion. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the lease amendment agreement between Westfield Golf Club and the city of Winona.
Second.
Okay, moved by Pam, seconded by Michelle.
Or Eileen.
Oh, Eileen.
Yeah, there's two of us over here.
All right. Very good. Any other comments or questions? We will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.4 is the grant agreement for the exterior work at the Masonic Temple.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, I think.
No, that was Paul.
Okay. I wasn't looking in the right direction.
We're getting you.
But it was a close second by, by Eileen over there. All right. I want to congratulate staff for successfully getting a $316,993 grant. I think it's great. I know there's been some real effort made to get this project going. It's a very significant grant and it's one of the larger grants I think they gave in the last go-round, so you did very well. Michelle?
I was just wondering, for curiosity's sake, did they have any ties to how the building's used or how long we have to own it? Do we have to pay back money if, for whatever reason, we don't own it anymore? Not that I'm talking about selling it, I'm just curious.
10 years.
Mayor and council, reason why I stood up so quick is that it's important that when you accept the resolution, it's noted in the resolution that the mayor and clerk are authorized to exit this agreement and any amendments on behalf of the city of Winona, because it is important to note that there is a discrepancy in the current grant agreement. And our city attorney wanted me to make sure that you were aware of that. The grant agreement says that we need to own the building for 10 years. The grant letter of acceptance says we need to own the building for 20 years. I've contacted MHS, they have not, I've talked to an actual person, I've had a conversation with them about that, and they're gonna get back to us before we sign any grant agreement. When that's resolved, we'll bring that information back to council so you know whether it's 10 or 20. However, in some of their detailed information and based on the discussion and the conversation, because it is a large grant of $316,000, that would normally push us into the 20-year category. But we will get that clarified before we sign.
Yeah, good question. Anything else? If you're not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.5 is the West Lake Path Bridge Repair.
I make a motion to approve the transfer of the $53,000 from the infrastructure fund to the park maintenance budget. Repair that bridge.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Eileen.
Good job.
And I have a question. How long will this bridge be gone?
Mayor and council, I don't know the exact answer to that. I, I know that it will be a lengthy period of time, but open before the warm months is what we've been told by one of the contractors that would look at this project. So I don't have an exact timeline. But they, as I mentioned in the item, they want to do it in the winter months as not to tear up the park and, you know, incur some more costs. So they said they'd like to do that when the ground is frozen, to take it out and put it back when the ground is frozen. So I'm, I'm going to assume weeks, but prior to the warm months when it's back in place.
Eileen?
Is there a plan for how to divert traffic in that area? My dog will be upset if she gets dumped in the creek.
Mayor and council, we, we plan to close the loop, which seems pretty obvious, but important to note that we would keep each end open so that, you know, if you would park at Dakota Street or Park and you would want to go around the lake, you, you couldn't at least make a U or take a significant walk before you're diverted. We would need to start warning people in, you know, sections east and west of the bridge, in some of the parking lots, we talked about putting up some signage. But we feel it's important to keep the path open. It's, it's still heavily used in the winter. We still think even going a U is important for people. And so we'll try and, try and close as close to the bridge as possible for the construction to happen. One thing along that note, as long as it was asked, I just wanted to make sure that the public knows, you know, we have put Jersey barriers on that corner, the southwest corner of the path, to prevent people from going south onto Highway 61. There will be times when we have to move that to get equipment in, but we'll move those back in place to, to keep that closed off as well. And so you, there will be some closures, obviously, around the path, but not, not the, you know, we'll have to close the loop, but not the entire path.
Michelle?
Can you all make sure to let the high school know?
We will.
Okay. The, the, because I'm assuming that part of the construction will kind of impede a little bit on there where the kids kind of...
Al?
Mayor and council, we'll, we'll have to actually ask for permission to access through part of their property.
Al?
How is this going to be handled as far as bidding and, and, you know, contracting at this amount of money? And what if the amount comes back significantly higher than the estimate?
It does not, it, of course, we have to follow the municipal bidding law. It is an amount where we can acquire two quotes. And so we're in the process of getting two quotes. We have an estimate already submitted and we have a contractor looking at the bridge who has not submitted a quote. If they decide not to, we would still meet the qualification of attempting to get the two quotes.
Good, thank you.
Paul?
Well, I may have missed this when Eileen asked, will, people have access from the mall entrance along County Ditch 1 to be able to come in from behind Kmart there and be able to still use that section while the bridge is under construction?
So mayor and council, it's close. That access point is very close to the bridge. I think that will be determined when we have a contractor established and whether or not, you know, to get machinery and equipment in there if that needs to be closed. My, my gut reaction is that we would close that area and sign that as well because of its close proximity to that area.
This is slightly off topic, but it has to do with the bike path. Has, there was some kind of recognition that was gonna be done for some of the donors to the bike path. Where is that at?
Mayor and council, we did place a sign at Lake Lot.
Oh, it is, okay.
It's been in place and we worked with the donors on that. And I think we've done an excellent job in recognizing that whole process.
Glad to hear it's been a long time, so, good. Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.6 is the Law Enforcement Labor Services Local 261 Contract for 2019 and 2020 for the Winona Police Sergeants.
Make a motion to approve that agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Good job negotiating, everybody involved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.7 is the 2019 Non-Union Wages.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Michelle.
I am, I'm good.
Then we'll move on to Eileen.
I have a question. I've had a couple of community members ask about the website. It's really difficult for folks to use the information on our city website. I've heard this from a lot of people. And I'm wondering if we, if staff can look at budgeting and overhaul of the website for next year to make it more user-friendly? And along with that, if we could look into some system where community members could request getting an agenda email, if we can create like a listserv or some mass email system where someone could opt-in and they could get an agenda every week, sort of like the council members do, so they can be better informed.
Okay. And one of the things Steve and I have talked about, and just having a, possibly a discussion during budgeting next year, to have a communications person that can do exactly what you're talking about.
I think that would be wonderful. And also thanks to the library and the library staff and congratulations on 120 wonderful years. What a boon it is to our community. That's all.
Al?
There's a great book by Greg Gouts about the library and its system.
I read it.
It's a great book. But, you know, I, I think we're talking about the old Kmart building, the mayor and city manager and myself were at the press conference with the folks from Gomdusin a while ago and, and that's an exciting project. I'm sure, hopefully, the bridge replacement won't interfere with that. I don't think it will, but it looks to bring another service for health in addition to already fine services we have in our community. So, it's a good press conference, although they didn't have any heat in the building when they had the press conference, it was cold.
Made it go faster.
Yes. Everybody talk faster.
Pam?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Paul?
All I gotta say is get ready to climb some ice.
But are you gonna climb the ice? Because I would show up for that.
Dart tootin'.
All right. I like that.
I'll show up when Michelle's climbing.
I did it last year and I'm excited to do it again this year. You can see the ice hanging, so.
George?
Okay, thank you. I just, just have a couple of condolences I'd like to pass on to the family of Gert Gabrick who passed away early last week. And she was 99 and in two months, she would have been 100. So condolences to her family and as they begin their healing process, but very wonderful woman. And also to the Dave Flanagan family, Dave who passed away here late last week, to his mother Marlene and his nieces and nephews, condolences to them. And we all know Dave, he went around town and willing to help everybody. Always had to snowplow. I need to have her on right now and what do you need done? And what he need done, he'd come and plow it. What do I owe ya? Have a good evening, and away he'd go. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items. Approval of the minutes from January 7th, and a claim against the city by Dan Weiss.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Well, I will second.
All right, a motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by George, and seconded by Michelle to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn.